We'll get started in just a moment, folks.
All right, everyone, welcome to this evening's meeting. It is 7:38. We are called to order. Folks, if you could please rise and pledge the flag. Roll call, please, Angela.
Saba El Zayed.
Here.
Amy Funahashi.
Here.
James Fee.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here.
Mr. President, I note for the record that we were in executive session for Personnel Matters from approximately 7 o'clock to approximately 7:38.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. Oh, Mr. Truman, take it away.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending. First up for council consideration is the approval of the September 13th, 2022, meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Funahashi, seconded by Ms. Nolan to approve the September 13th meeting minutes. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or the public on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next up, as is borough tradition, at least since 2017, when the Bridgeport 5K began, we have a mayoral proclamation and presentation to the fastest man and woman in Bridgeport for this year's 2022 Bridgeport 5K. With that, I would ask if Mayor Jack Seer would please go to the podium and if Ms. Emily Fisk and Mr. Alexander Pulteney could step forward, please.
Two proclamations. I'm gonna kind of squeeze them together in recognition of both the fastest man and fastest woman in Bridgeport. Whereas on October 1st, 2022, Bridgeport Borough held its fifth annual Bridgeport 5K race. The race included residents and non-residents of Bridgeport Borough and took runners on a scenic tour of our beautiful town. Whereas Bridgeport Borough resident Alexander Pulteney finished the 5K race in a time of 23 minutes and 10.59 seconds and placed ninth overall in the race. Whereas Bridgeport Borough resident Emily Fisk finished the 5K race in a time of 23 minutes and 8.32 seconds and placed eighth overall in the race. It's confusing going back and forth. My apologies. Whereas Bridgeport resident Alexander Pulteney was the first male resident of Bridgeport Borough to cross the finish line, making him the fastest man in Bridgeport. Whereas Bridgeport Borough resident Emily Fisk was the first female resident of Bridgeport Borough to cross the finish line, making her the fastest woman in Bridgeport. Now therefore, I, Beth Jackseer, mayor of the Borough of Bridgeport, and on behalf of the residents of the Borough of Bridgeport, do hereby recognize and congratulate Bridgeport resident Alexander Pulteney on his success in the fifth annual Bridgeport 5K and being the fastest man in Bridgeport. And Bridgeport Borough resident Emily Fisk on her success in the fifth annual Bridgeport 5K and being the fastest woman in Bridgeport. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the Borough of Bridgeport to be affixed this 11th day of October in the year of our Lord 2022. Congratulations, guys.
Emily's got her running shoes on.
Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Appreciate you coming out.
Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you, Emily.
Nice to meet you, too.
Likewise.
Thanks for organizing.
Absolutely. Pleasure. Just have a great night. Take care now.
And fastest man and woman in Bridgeport. We have an exciting agenda here, but I'm not sure if you're gonna find it as exciting as we do. So certainly, you don't have to stay. If you would like to, you are more than welcome.
All right. Thank you again and again. Congratulations. Next up for council consideration. Resolution 2022-44, Authorization of Joint Notice of Intent to Award and Notice of Award to Allen Myers LP for the 2022 paving project contingent upon satisfactory review of bonds and insurance certificates. And members of council, members of the audience. For clarification, the winning bid amount for this, for this bid opening, which took place on September 23rd, 2022, again, Allen Myers of Worcester, Pennsylvania, the bid amount was $710,000 and $710,450.
And when do we, when do we expect calendar year for this project or for the blocks that will be included on this contract to start paving?
Mr. Woyden, do we have a ballpark on that yet, sir?
I believe so, Mr. Truman. Thank you. Mr. President, I think that if council is so inclined to approve this motion or this resolution this evening, well, Allen Myers is ready to submit the information. We've checked the references. I think we all know who they are and seen their work around the county and other places. I would anticipate that we would be underway within three, four weeks.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
In that case, I will make a motion for the resolution.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Funahashi, to go ahead and authorize the intent to award to Allen Myers LP for the paving project. Additional questions or comments from council? Or the public? All right then. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. Next up for council consideration, Resolution 2022-45, awarding the lowest responsible bidder for the residential trash and recycling services contract. Members of council, members of the audience, excuse me, on October 6th of this year, the Borough of Bridgeport Administration received and, I should say, I'm sorry, October 6th was the deadline for Borough Administration to receive eligible bid proposals from local trash providers for proposals to assume the residential trash and recycling collection duties. On that date, we received only one proposal from our incumbent provider, JP Mascaro and Sons. On the PowerPoint slide in front of you and on the projector here in the room, here is a, an outlook of the, the annual contracted cost for said services. Our current year, 2022, the contracted amount is $466,000 and 116. And the bid proposal that we received from JP Mascaro and Sons goes as follows. A $2,023 figure of 745,752, which represents a 59.9% increase upon calendar year 2022. A 2024 amount of 781,224. 2025 would be 821,184. 2026 would be 901,188. And 2027 would be 962,148. And years 26 and 27 have asterisks in front of them denoting the fact that Borough Council has the option to select either a three or five-year term, as that was the manner in which this contract was bid out.
And Mr. Truman, before we go further in the conversation, I know Mr. DeGeneres here to discuss this. You did reach out and this was very, I know we only got, I just want to be very clear that even though we got one bid, we were very proactive in trying to solicit bids.
As, as is the case every year, members of council, members of the audience, you know, it was advertised in a, in a local publication, as is prescribed by Pennsylvania Borough Code. I did, in fact, receive inquiries from multiple haulers who were interested in getting further information and specs on the community. And when the time came for, for bid proposals to be submitted, we only received one.
I think everybody is aware we're, we're going to hear from the residents about a, about a 60% increase for '23. So I just want to, folks here and that are going to be watching this streamed or on video, we made every effort to solicit bids.
Perhaps if it would please counsel of Mr. DeGeneres wants to step forward, if any members of council have any questions, they'd like to apprise Mr. DeGeneres.
I'd be happy to answer any questions, Al DeGeneres. If I could just say a few words before. I'm deputy general counsel for the company, and although I'm a lawyer by trade, I'm more involved in the business aspects of this business for the last 20 or 25 years. I can tell you, some of which you should obviously know with the pandemic, these have been exceptional and unusual times in our industry and in our country. In the last three years, since the bid went off three years ago, interest of, our interest costs have gone up 70%. Our labor costs have gone up 60%. Our fuel costs have gone up 60 to 70%. Our insurance costs have gone up about 20 to 25%. Disposal processing have gone up about 20 to 25%. Regulatory healthcare insurance, all the things you folks see on a day-in, day-in basis, day in, day out, we've seen. But the caveat is that our industry, probably, and one of the exceptions to what's going on in this country, are even being more impacted by it. As I, as I showed Mr. Truman a spreadsheet of some other contracts, in the last 10 contracts that we participated in, we've been the only bidder five times. Even the national public companies are having difficulty in all aspects of our business. So the real, the industry is constricting. It's becoming more difficult and challenging to serve these contracts, day in and day out, with the problems with labor, uncertainty in the regulatory industry and whatnot. And I look at these numbers and I know when I spoke to Mr. Truman, he said $300,000 increase. But if I was to just read to you, I thought I had it in my file, but I don't. Just to give you an idea, in the last six months, I'm gonna read you contracts where we were awarded or about to be awarded to give you the idea of an increase. Schellington Borough, it's a borough in Berks County, recycling only, their price has gone up 104% from the last contract award. Two communities, some of my colleagues are over in right now in Lower Bucks County, Upper Southampton, Lower Southampton, their prices went up 102%. Washington Township, a township in Carbon County, 80%. Wyom Missing, a borough similar to this size, maybe a little smaller, the contract price went up 142%. So what you're seeing in our industry is, it's being more of a challenge and more of a effort to service them. And I also think one of the reasons why you probably didn't get any other bids is, even though these prices look ridiculously high to you, because of our network right here, we offer you the most competitive, there's not a lot of, you know, what fuel we spend is tied to the outside, but we're right here and I suspect that people know that they can't be this competitively. You do go out to public bid, and the only thing I would suggest, answer any questions, and look, I defer to you, you know what's best for your community, but three years ago, you awarded a three-year contract, and I have no doubt that if you looked at years four and five in that contract, three years ago, they're lower than what our contract prices are for the first two years now. And I would suggest that our industry's not changing. It's getting more difficult. It's getting more difficult in permitting of our landfills and our regulatory issues. And maybe you want to take a second look at this, even though those numbers look high, because I will be shocked if I come back here in three years, if I'm still working, I've been doing this for 31 years, if, if the 2026 price is lower than the $900,000 you see. And, and lastly, and then I'll answer any questions, the other chart I gave, Mr. Truman, I don't have, is your, your per-unit price is very competitive with what's going on in this industry in Montgomery County. It was, what was it, Keith? $35 or $36 per month, something like that. I don't have it in front of me. But when you think about, and I've seen communities that it's 50 and 55, depending upon the geography. This is a tighter borough, so it's not as, not as spread out. But that's the state of our industry. And if you looked anywhere else and called any of your other sister communities, I'd tell you what, what their experience are the same as what's happened here, unfortunately.
I think everything gets more expensive every year and this year, quadruply so. The numbers that, because we're gonna get questions. We're gonna get questions from residents, and they're gonna have the same questions that we're gonna have tonight. Some of those costs that you outlined, labor costs, could we, can we see some of those so we can show our residents that this was the payroll and now this is the payroll and it is what it is?
Well, I can tell you this.
I want bullet points to, I want bullet points to be able to show our residents that this is what we have to do.
I can definitely, I can definitely show you the increases in labor three years ago versus now. Someone driving a rear-end truck in our community, in your community, that hits all the points they're supposed to hit in terms of attendance, bonuses, whatnot, it's, it's about 60% higher than it was three years ago. Same with individuals in the back of the truck. So, and honestly, I don't want to have this come across the wrong way, but if ever there was a time where residents, if they have to swallow an increase, should have an appreciation for what's going on in this country and in our industry. With the pandemic, if you're gonna have to raise prices, I mean, there's, there's no time like now because of what we're experiencing. And I don't, I don't see it leveling off. And just to give you an idea, you know, fuel was going down, now it's going back up. The recyclables started to have a market, now it started to be less expensive, now they're going back up. Costs more to handle recyclables than it does right now to handle trash. So I can give you percentages. I don't know that I'm gonna show you someone's W2 form and tell you what they made three years ago versus now, for confidential and other reasons, but.
I think, you know, I think everybody understands the situation that we're in economically. But even if it's a percentage.
I can do that.
If we were to, if we were to approve this tonight, I just, I want to have something very, very concrete that I can show people as to why.
Sure.
As long as the same reasons that I, that I asked Mr. Truman to really hammer home that we solicited bids, it's, it's a big bump and it's, people are gonna feel it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, Mr. President. And if you look around, one of the reasons why our companies here are able to compete with these national public companies is we have our own network. But the smaller companies, they're, they're going by the wayside because it's such a highly regulated and overly capital-intensive truck. The trucks have gone up 25%, those trash trucks. It takes us a year to get them. Think about that. From the time you put your order in, it takes a year to get that truck. And it's 25% now when you order. Can't be guaranteed it'll still be 25% steel, whatnot. So, I know I appreciate the inquire, but I know you have to answer your constituents, but I'll get you whatever you ask me to the extent.
I just think some of those things that you rattled off, salary, your, your labor costs, your, your fuel costs, financing costs.
Sure.
If we could just, if we could have those numbers to show people, then we could feel a little bit more comfortable going into those conversations.
Just to be thorough, anything that impacts the increase? Sure. Any expense that's gone up? Sure. I'd be happy to do that. I'll get that to Mr. Truman in the, in the next few days.
Can I add to that? I'm curious to know why the increases are so uneven per year? Like, why 9.7 for 2026? So if you could break that down a little bit more for us, that would be great.
I'll tell you what, I'll do my best, councilwoman, because I'm not the guy that crunches the numbers. But if you, if, my sense is, you mean, why is 2023 $745,000 versus why is 2024, why the increase annually percentage-wise?
Well, right, why 4.8% one year, 5.1, and then 9.7? Why does it change so much?
Well, I, I think it probably has to do with anticipating whether there's, whether new equipment is being added in and how's that amortized. Maybe we're gonna start 2023 with a truck a year or two older, and by the end of the first year, there'll be a second truck. But in fairness, I don't know the true answer to that. I'll get you the answer to that, because I didn't crunch the numbers.
Okay, just curious.
Sure.
Al, do, of your residential trash collection fleet, do you have any of the automated trucks or are you strictly, you know, two guys on the back still?
We, Keith, we do, we do automated contracts. They're the minority. And I'll be honest with you, the automated trucks favor the hauler. They don't favor the customer, and here's why. When you have a totter under an automated truck where the truck has the arm, one guy operating that truck, the reason why they say they favor the company is there's one person on the truck, their labor costs are less, they don't have a second and third set of eyes nears in the back of the truck with an exposure for, to potential injuries.
Yeah, my question really was more if you could give a breakdown on the, the cost difference in liability insurance on, you know, per-truck basis for an automated truck versus having guys on the back of a truck. I'm sure it's substantially higher for having people on the back of a truck.
I can't give that to you now. I could try to get it for you. But again, our competitors, we're, Pat Mascaro and Bill Fox are over in a community right now in Lower South Hampton Township and Upper Southampton Township. And the percentage, even though, even though they sell it where it's automated, the percentage difference between what our bid is and what, what the bid for automated is, is only a few percent. In fact, the way they structure it, oftentimes, you can't put bulk in the, in the totter. So the cost, you might think you serve that way. You gotta send a separate truck around with a separate crew. So it's really, it's really not, it's not that much expensive, if any less expensive, but it benefits the hauler in terms of its, its operating costs that aren't necessarily passed, passed along.
I know a couple of things. First of all, there have been a number, there's always a number of complaints about service, especially on our streets where every street's a one-way street almost. And with, with the wind tunnel, if the, if garbage isn't picked up, it's not just kind of a nuisance, it means that the garbage is blown all over the place. You know, if we, we're going to end up having to agree to a contract here, can we expect and get in writing better service or be able to, because the service, I'm not saying it's terrible. I don't want to be complaining, but there are not legitimate complaints every single week with garbage pickup, of garbage being left or left on the ground, and it blows all over the place, especially on windy days. What is our recourse, Mr. Truman or Mr. DeGeneres, about what we can do with improving the service for our borough?
Well, look, you, you, you see and hear what you see and hear here. What I can tell you about our businesses, you know, we have our arms wrapped around it. We're fortunately right now to be in a better position than we were before the pandemic, as difficult as it sounds. But frankly, because of the increases and things we've done, our labor force and our employees driving trucks are as good, if not better, than they've been. Look, am I gonna sit here and tell you there's never gonna be a miss? Absolutely not. What I can tell you is two things. If there's, if there's a miss in this borough, there's a management team in place that if, if we get a call, we're, you know, we should be able to get it that night. Interestingly, I don't know what your word says. I'm not blaming residents, trash, if it's trash missed, we should pick it up. But if there's loose trash blowing, you probably have something. One of the difficult things is when people just dump stuff in a container and don't put it in a bag. And that's, that happens everywhere. It's human nature. Some people do that. Or some people walk in their animal or throw something loose in there when there's a bag in there. So to answer your question, you know, Mr. Truman knows there's two guys in this, in this town almost all the time. If there's any issues, we should get to them. But I think your solicitor will tell you that your specs always have some language talking about penalties and things. But look, some council members used to have my phone number. I used to get calls. And I'm happy to give you my phone number to make sure that if, if it doesn't get addressed by Mr. Truman, I'll get somebody over here to pick it up. And the key is if we miss it, to get it, to get it, if not that day, the very next day. And I understand that.
And look, I want to appreciate the people who do the trash pickup, because I've driven behind them and they go and they do. And it's not an easy job, and it's not a glamorous job. And people love to complain about trash collectors and, and, you know, they're human beings. But I do know that sometimes when a trash can is not picked up, for whatever, maybe it's behind a car, right? Like, because it's all, we all have street parking. And so it's human nature, they miss it. Sometimes they have to wait a couple days almost of it sitting there. So I just want to make sure that things are addressed as expeditiously as possible.
Well, that should never happen. Our depot's right, right across the street. So if we miss it, we should get it, if not that, that day, the next day. And if that's happening, that's unacceptable. And if Mr. Truman lets you know, I'll address that. And I did not even get into, but I just have to say, in defense of my company, during this pandemic, we didn't get a nickel from anybody. And we never knew from day to day when people were gonna show up and not show up. And we certainly were being paid a wage that we bid on. But when we bid this thing three years ago, we never knew what we were gonna be experiencing. And just like now, you never know what'll happen in the next three years. But, you know, I should have said at the very beginning, we appreciate the borough's business and thank you very much and always have appreciated the business. And Mr. Truman knows, I'm a phone call away. Even though I'm a lawyer, I'm more involved in stuff other than law, for better, for worse. So, you know, anytime I can be of assistance to any of you, I'm happy to do that. I mean that.
And one other question, I, it comes up every time we have a trash contract, is that people look at other municipalities about how people can get their own trash instead of through the borough or municipality. I don't even know if we could do that. And I don't agree to do that because I would rather disperse the cost instead of splitting it up. But since you're more of an expert on that, why is that not as great of a thing for a resident, a household, if they are all picking their own?
Here's why. First of all, I lived in a community in Blue Bell, and I begged my supervisors to go out to bid. And they had this ridiculous mindset that everybody could pick up what they want. In a cul-de-sac, every day I had a different truck. Your roads aren't built to take all those extra truck traffic and damage to your infrastructure, number one. Number two, as high as you think these prices are, they're locked in. If there's another pandemic, God forbid, I hope there's not, those are our bid prices. It sounds good that you, people can pick their own hauler, but there's no guarantee on how long that pricing lasts. And I know one particular competitor that seems to have a lot of business has been, has been raising his prices every three or four months. Republic Industry, the second-largest public company in the country, is pulling out of doing that service. They're not doing individual subscription. Why is it not bigger? From a green, from a, from a green standpoint, I could talk for a long time. Less carbon footprint, save on fuel, in one truck in a neighborhood. You know who the truck is. You can have the requirements for what their insurance levels are. So all these things that you have control over when you have a contract like this, you have no control over if you just say, come in whoever wants to service the municipality. So trust me, Bridgeport, for a long time, as have many other boroughs in the, in the county, because of the, of the older nature of them, have been way ahead of the curve in having a single hauler. Now, it's going more and more that way. We're getting calls from municipalities about us helping them look at these bid specs, because that's really the way to go for a lot of reasons. Price, green, and so on and so forth. It's, you would go backward if you ever did that. You'd have no control, it would be a free-for-all. Your Public Works Department would go nuts every day. You'd never know who's picking up trash, when and where. No, I would.
And I think we've talked about it before, and I think in a borough that's dense like this, what would invariably happen is a lot of folks just wouldn't contract it and would throw their bags in their neighbor's can or would throw them in the basement, you know?
Yeah.
Folks ask about it all the time, and Mr. Heil, I'm glad you brought it up. But, you know, in my mind, the reason that we do this is because it assures that everybody gets their trash picked up.
Yeah, and I just wanted to get that on the record. I don't disagree with any of that. I just wanted to make sure that if people are listening, that's on the record.
And see, as an elected official, what two most important things are there besides public safety and health sanitation in your town? You want to make sure you're safe by police, and you don't want your town to become a dumping ground. And by having a police department, department, and by having a single contract, you have control over that. Now, I can't imagine a majority of your residents would want to have anything but what they're having, notwithstanding the, the price increase you're going to pass along. Because it wouldn't be cheaper in the long run. Trust me, it would not.
We've, again, this one's for Mr. Truman, we've also talked about bringing it back in-house. I know that's been kicked around every once in a while. We likely couldn't compete with these numbers, or?
I sincerely doubt it. You know, the, first and foremost, given the, the ever-present supply chain issue concerns these days, it's taking at least 48 months to build a trash truck from scratch. So at the very least, we would need to be bound to a provider or a contract similar to what Mascaro's offering here for at least another four years, if not longer. We do not currently have staff that are CDL certified. We would need to take into consideration the exorbitant increase in liability insurance, because being on the back of a trash truck is one of the most dangerous jobs in America. We would need to source and pay for a destination site, a dumping site for the trash. We would need to, you know, our current collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters does not have a provision in it for trash collection. So we would need to reopen the collective bargaining agreement to, to permit for that. It's, I can't sit here tonight, not having ever experienced a time in Bridgeport personally, where Public Works was responsible for trash collection, and definitively say that we can't compete. But there are a lot of variables, a lot of moving parts, that in all likelihood would make it generally prohibitive to, to entertain such a notion. As Mr. DiGennaro said, unfortunately, most people are moving in the opposite direction, not, not bringing it back in-house, but, but privatizing it, or, or, you know, leaving it up to a municipal-wide collection contract.
I would just add, regulatory compliance is a huge expense that we would be taking on. In addition to that, vector control, because you're going to have a truck that has trash, leachate, vector such as mosquitoes, rats, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Any other, anybody other questions for Mr. DiGennaro?
I just have a more general question. I know that, like Mr. Heil said, there, you know, residents complain about trash. It's just the nature of the beast. Is it something, I, I haven't visited the Mascaro website. Is it something that's offered where I know, like, if you have a power outage, you can report it to PICO? Is that something that your company offers?
We, we get calls directly from your residents as well as through the borough administration. But ideally, the calls would come directly into us as opposed to through the Borough Hall. And every time we get a new contract, we send a flyer out, and we always give the 1-800 number and the local number, and there's even a website. So there's, there's multiple avenues for a resident to contact us directly as opposed to go through the borough. But I think sometimes they just like to call here to feel like getting the money's worth and let you know about it, as opposed to calling us. But.
Do we, do we advertise that number?
We like to have a record of those calls too, Al.
Do we advertise that number, Mr. Truman? Is that on the website?
We do, yes.
Okay.
I've, I've actually called because either myself or my neighbor next door, our garbage wasn't picked up one day, or recycling wasn't, and it was resolved. So we, we did just called.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I, I think at this point, we'd be looking for, but, Mr. Truman, is there anything else to add before we?
There is not, President Schenk, it's just a matter of adopting Resolution 2022-45, but again, stipulating whether we are going with the three- or five-year option.
My question first, before we do that, is this is the option no matter the size of the borough, right? So if we, we have a little over 5,000 residents now, if we suddenly had 45,000 residents, is this, this is the cost? We're not going to have 45,000 residents, we're just saying, like, that's the cost.
I know, Vice President Heil, it's, it's on a per-unit basis. And as the borough grows, so too would, would the annual cost. So as we're expecting new residential development in the pipeline over the next several years, there's a, there's a multiplier.
Is the, the riverfront, they're under an HOA that would bargain separately? I actually don't recall. Or would that be, are they bound by the borough?
As we have, we, as.
At this point?
As we have not, as they do not have final land development approval, President Schenk, we have not made a final decision on that.
And they haven't produced a homeowners association agreement yet.
Okay. Do we have an indication of that question? Have they, I don't recall anything public.
I don't recall debating that particular issue, but there's an issue with regard to what's going to be owned by the homeowners association with regard to roads and parking lots and other amenities versus what the borough is going to accept.
I was initially inclined, out of personal feeling, to just go with the three-year contract. Given the huge jump from last year to this year, I'm concerned that our, that that would be penny-wise and poundful if to do that. I think that it might be in our borough's best and in a resident's financial best interest if we went with the five-year contract to save money for them in 2026 and 2027. Because I have a strong worry that we'll get there. And, you know, instead of that 9.7% increase, it's going to be a 20, or 30, or 40% increase. And we'll look back now and say, yeah, we didn't vote for that, but the next person's going to have to, and the residents are going to have to eat that bill so that we, you know, didn't give them as much money now.
I would tend to agree with you, Mr. Heil.
I know that it was mentioned that it could be unlikely that we would get any lower bid, and that we had some interest, but no one submitted a bid. Would it be worth following up with the people that expressed any interest, just to see if we could get one last, you know, attempt? Because if I could get one number to compare it with, I would feel a lot more comfortable making this decision than just like, oh, this is our only choice.
Yeah, do we have to make this decision tonight? Is it a possibility that we table this for one more?
I don't know if it needs to be done tonight, but let me just address this first. We can't do that. All we can do is reject the bids and rebid. We can't specifically talk to haulers. So it's a question of whether, what timeline are we under here? We, do we need to vote this evening? Keith?
We don't need to vote this evening. However, I think it makes, it's, it makes sense to, to certainly make a decision by this next meeting. And truthfully, I don't know of any alternative resolutions or outcomes or change that we're going to have within two weeks' time.
So your recommendation is to vote this evening?
Unfortunately, would be, yes.
Okay. Did I address everyone's questions?
All due respect to, to present company.
Did I address everyone's questions?
Amy, did that, did that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
If we were, if we were to reject the vote, we would, they would submit a new vote. And if they knew they were.
And for what? Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, just looking at these numbers, it's just, it's gross. It makes me sick to my stomach. But also, you know, as a resident, looking after my wallet, like, I hate these numbers. But also knowing that, you know, when we accepted the three-year bid in 2019, you know, we were so naive to think like, oh, things will get better the next time we have to go out to bid. And I'm, I'm just not willing to take that gamble with other people's money at this point. Like, I'm, I'm not willing to gamble what 2025 is going to look like. I guess we kind of have to go with a five-year.
A little traumatized over the last three years, is that, is that what you're saying?
It's.
Certainly me.
Like, I'm, I'm not a gambler. And like, not even like, you know, like, being funny, like, you know, like, when I go to a casino, I only sit at the slot machines with the $20 and, and just play that all night. Like, I'm, I'm, I'm not willing to gamble with my money, and I'm not willing to gamble with other people's money. It just, it's an unenthusiastic, I guess these are our options.
Well, it still wasn't explained why it's 9.7 suddenly, you know, four years in. Like, I would be interested in hearing why.
Right. And would we be getting more information next session, like, from Mascaro?
I think what we've, what Mr. DiGennaro committed to providing us with some of those labor numbers, the labor, the interest, some of those numbers that are going into this cost. To, Amy, to your question, just knowing what I know about how this works, I think Mr. DiGennaro, his point there being, looking forward, are they going to have to acquire a new truck? I think those are the items that mean, that's what takes it from 4.8 to 5.1 to 9.7, back to 6.8. That's just looking at the cost that they are projecting.
Right, but then we would be able to say we're getting a new truck, you know, something to, just to that number.
Yeah, like, when my insurance cost goes up, it's usually because, like, I get acupuncture added to my, my benefit. Like, are we getting new recycling containers for everyone? Like, I want to see, I mean, a new, nice new truck is, you know, neat, it's a needed thing. And they should be budgeting for maintenance and replacing vehicles. But if we're looking at, and I know that fuels and everything is up across the board, but if we're looking at all of these increases, you know, the residents want to see something, be it better service, you know, somebody actually showing up for yard cleanup, like, yard cleanup day. Like, I'm a resident, I expect more service for this money.
And just so everyone knows, like, this isn't a negotiation, so, so it's the bid. Now, we, as, as Mr. Bello and Mr. Truman said.
It's, it's not a bid, but I think we're allowed to sit up here and just vent and voice what we have to say.
I don't know, I know that we all understand. I just said, so everyone else knows, like, why didn't they negotiate this, or why didn't they negotiate that? Like, we don't have that option to do that. That's not the process. That's not what we're legally allowed to do. So we can't look at them and say, okay, instead of 9.7% year forward, it's 8%. Like, we just are not able to do that. Because if we were able to do that, we would just negotiate down to 10 bucks a pop, right? Like, that's.
I don't want to stretch the process. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Truman.
To answer to one of Council, Council, Councilman Fee's points, yes, I think that Mr. DiGennaro did commit to providing additional explanation and rationale behind, the why behind these increases. However, to that end, I think it's going to be that, whatever that Al and Mascaro provides, that's going to be fodder for us to provide to our, or educational material to provide to our residential base. It's not going to change or affect the ultimate, the decision that needs to be made. And to Councilwoman Nolan's point, yes, when your residential recycling container has reached its life expectancy and end of its life, the cost of replacing that container is built into this contract.
And just to further clarify, the information being provided by Mr. DiGennaro is going to speak mostly to the 60% increase, as opposed to the, the future increases?
The future increases, they, they have, they have financial analysts that, that tell them when, when potential regulatory implemented, when new policies and regulations are going to be implemented X amount of years down the line, and how that hits them in the wallet, and what they need to do to, to budget and pad the budget to, to take that hit. And clearly something's coming, whether it's capital, capital build-out, capital purchase, or some new regulation that's going to hit them in the wallets coming in '26, guys.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I want to necessarily stretch the process out. But, Mr. DiGennaro, you've committed to getting us the numbers, I think, that we asked for so that we can show this to our residents. My, my thought, and I agree with Mr. Heil and Ms. Nolan here, that we should probably take this five-year contract. As ugly as the numbers are, it's, we have those locked in. And God knows what would happen in the next five years, judging from the last three. So let's do what we can to protect our residents.
With that in mind, I think covering our bases, I'll make a motion to approve the five-year contract with JP Mascaro.
A second.
We have a motion for Mr. Heil, and it's seconded by Ms. Al Zayed to approve the five-year contract. Questions or comments from council on that motion?
I would just say, I would rather be wrong and end up costing the residents in the borough $20,000 than be wrong in the other direction and costing the borough residents $300,000.
Mr. Gundrum?
Good evening, council. John Gundrum, resident 312 Grove Street. Overall, based on these percentage increases, I'm looking at, like, my current sewer bill being a yearly cost of $320. And after that 59% increase, am I expecting to see that to increase similarly in that time? Because if I, if I do, that's going up quite a bit.
I don't think we have a, the number locked in for the budget cycle yet. I'm sure we were waiting for this, Mr. Truman.
Over this time, in a five-year period, it pretty much, if you add those percentages on to my yearly fee, it more than doubles the price of what I'm paying now.
And that's, we'll likely be looking at something along those lines. Yeah, you're right. We don't, we don't have the numbers, because we haven't, we haven't dumped them into the budget yet, but.
I have my.
Yeah, we, we can't, we can't use.
And I just put those percentages to it, and that's what it does.
We can't use other sources of revenue necessarily to subsidize this, or else, you know, there's no need to hide the cost, you know? It's, it is what it is. It's, what it costs us is what it costs the residents. I wish we could. I wish we had that commercial tax base that some towns have that can subsidize services like this.
Is there anything?
I mean, as, as, just a note, President Schenk, as a rule, I mean, you've mentioned, you know, subsidizing these costs. As a rule, the things like sewer and trash are pass-through costs and are rarely, if, if ever subsidized by other general fund revenues.
So, I mean, with smart planning, we keep our costs down elsewhere with taxes and other fees. But this is a pass-through fee.
It has been over 10 years since a real estate tax increase has taken place, so.
Mr. Gundrum, yeah, to answer your question, it's a, it's a pass-through cost, more or less. So you're looking at something like that.
Yeah, that's kind of what I figured, so that's something the residents can expect. Okay.
The seven of us, too. Other, we do have the motion on the table. Other questions or comments from the public? Okay. Then we'll, we'll call to a vote. All those in favor of the motion on the table for the five-year contract? Hi. Any opposed?
Yeah, just me.
All right, Mr. Fee. So that's a six-to-one vote. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next up for council consideration, authorization of payment estimate number one for the Memorial Park Trail project in the amount of $85,941. Members of council, members of the audience, if anybody has been up Grove Street within the last few weeks, Plymark Construction, the contractor for this job, is making excellent progress. The majority, if not all, of the curb and sidewalk along Grove Street has been installed. The, the asphalt has been laid for the walking trail along the hillside. Frankly, and I'm not sure if he does, and I certainly am not putting him on the spot, but perhaps Mr. Woyden has a overall project status update. But this is, this would be payment estimate number one to, to cover the work performed up to and including September 30th.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. Yeah, I can add a little bit to that. Just to reconcile what Mr. Truman said is absolutely correct. The contractor is ahead of schedule, moving along very well. The payment estimate is from a couple of weeks ago. So the cutoff for this, therefore, the difference in progress, what you see today versus what you're paying for. So the, this work, you know, is, is, it's a total contract of $270,763. This payment estimate, less the retainage, is $85,941, and reflects the, the status at that time. But there are, they have moved along. Most of the trail is in, as Mr. Truman mentioned, and the, all the curbing was, is done. Sidewalk is, is probably nearly complete now also. So, coming along very well.
Well, since it's coming along very well, I'll make a motion to authorize payment.
A second.
Motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Gundrum, to authorize the payment for the trail project. Questions or comments from council? Or the public? Yes, sir. Come on up. Come on up.
Dan Valerio, 600 Block of Grove. I'm there, he's, he'll be done probably tomorrow, I see how much, and doing a beautiful job. My only concern is why is the sidewalk five feet wide and not four? And is that going to be a one-way street now? Because people on the, on the side where I live are saying, and I just spoke to the, I guess, the boss of the job, you'd say, and he even said, he says, I don't know why we didn't have a four-foot sidewalk and kept this street at a wider, you know, distance, because I drive a big truck and all my other cars, and now I have to jockey in, there's nothing we can do, because the sidewalk's five feet done, you know, five feet wide, and it's almost done. And the quality of work, you got a great crew, beautiful work, but my only concern is there's going to be a one-way street, and why didn't, I asked, they said they could have went into the, into the bank another foot. I said, what's the cost? Nothing. So, why didn't we think of that before now we're inconvenienced all the residents on that street?
I can, I can take that. And Mr. Valerio, I'm not certain who you spoke to up there, but we cut into the hillside as, as much as we could, this was engineered by our borough engineer. The reason that we went with five-foot-wide sidewalks is because the majority of this project is being paid for with, with grant money. And with, with that comes abiding by federal regulations and laws, and ADA-approved sidewalks are five-foot in width. If we offered up anything narrower, it, it would have been dead on arrival. As for the width of the road, and, you know, I lean on my engineers for this, but I, what's, even with the five-foot-wide sidewalk, there's still a 26-foot-wide cart path that, and that include, that doesn't include the on-street parking along, on the other side of Grove. So, you have the, whatever the width is, probably eight feet wide for the on-street parking, and then another 26 feet. Your standard Bluebird or International school bus is nine-and-a-half foot wide. So, nine-and-a-half foot times two, that's 19 feet, there should be an additional seven foot of wiggle room for two buses to pass by there, and, you know, going opposite directions, so no, sir, it's not going to turn into a one-way street, it's going to remain a two-way street.
I'd like to measure that, because I'm on there every day, and I live there, and the next part of the puzzle is, I'm amazed that we spent that much money. I can count how many people walk that street, my sidewalk's beautiful. Why did we have to spend 300 grand to have seven people walk up in the morning? I mean, I love spending money, and thank God for Plymar, because, like I said, they're great guys, but I just didn't see a reason why we needed that for seven, eight, 10 in the morning, when I see them walking up the street, who actually walk on that side. But it's done with, and I just hope it doesn't turn into a one-way street, and it still stays two-way, so that was my only concern then.
Understood, sir, and of that, of that total amount, the, the borough's portion of that is considerably, considerably lower. The majority of it, 70, 70% of this, if not greater, was covered by the, with the grant money.
Gotcha. How'd you pick Grove, and why Grove? How'd that come up? Oh, just because?
It was, it was an added amenity to the, to the park and providing.
Oh, okay, because of the trail?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good enough, all right, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Valerio.
Thank you.
Oh, we still have the motion on the floor, yeah, we do, don't we? Any other comments from the public? All right, then, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, that's unanimous, thanks.
All right, next up for council consideration, approval of state pension aid dispersment to our respective pension funds. Members of council, in your packets, you will find a memorandum dated October 7th, touching on this topic. By voting to approve the dispersment, or just, just as some, some background information, on September 28th, the borough received our annual state aid, which is specifically earmarked towards defraying our annual pension financial obligation to each of our respective pension funds. Boroughs and townships only have 30 days upon receipt of these funds to deposit them into each respective bank account, which is why we are proceeding tonight by voting in favor of dispersing these monies and depositing them into each of the respective pension funds. For the record, you would be voting to deposit $54,327 into the police, the police pension plan, and $51,250 into the non-uniform employee-defined benefit plan, and $13,805.19 into the non-uniform defined contribution plan.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the aid dispersment to our pension funds.
I'll second.
I appreciate everyone being so polite. We have a motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Mr. Fee, to approve the dispersment of the pension funds. Questions or comments from council? Or the public? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's unanimous, thank you.
And next up for council consideration, acceptance of the auditor's report and letter to management for the borough pension funds. Members of council, this is a, an annual agenda item, whereupon, when, when our auditors, BBD associates, perform the annual pension on not only the overall bank accounts and funds of the, of the borough, but our pension funds, we look to council to vote to accept these reports. Just a, I wanted to provide a brief snapshot, because generally, these only happen every two years. The audit that was done on both the police pension plan and the non-uniform pension plan covers calendar years 2020 and 2021. As you can see on the screen, we have a year-end balance in the non-uniform pension plan of, in, for 2020, of 2.69 million and change. In 2021, it was 3 million and change, net increase of 218,447 in 2020, net increase of 370,626 in 2021. And then the net position down there, that is, it's net position as a percentage of your, our total overall pension liability, that is, how, quote-unquote, how funded your pension plans are. Obviously, it's like a test score, the closer you get to 100, the better financial health your pensions are in. Generally speaking, if you a score of 95 or higher, means you're in pretty decent financial shape pension-wise. Both the non-uniform and the police plan, as you'll see in one more slide, are overfunded. As of calendar year 2021, we are 100, and just about 107% overfunded in the, the non-uniform pension plan. Moving on to the police plan, you can see that at the end of 2020, we were 104% overfunded in the police pension plan, and at the end of 2021, we were 108.7, 100, almost 109% overfunded in the police pension fund. So, enjoyed very good performance market-wise in both of our pension funds, in both calendar years 2020 and 2021. And with that, I would ask council to accept both the manager's, the letter to management, and the auditor's report for the pension plans.
And the, and the auditor's report found nothing of note in, in the books?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Motion's from Ms. Gundrum?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Heil, thank you. Questions or comments from council on the, accepting the auditor's report and letter to management? All right, from the public? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, that's unanimous, thank you.
Okay, moving forward to the next point of order on the agenda, unfinished business. Are there any members of council with unfinished business to address at this time? All right, seeing none, we can, excuse me, proceed to committee reports. Are there any committee reports to share this evening? All right, seeing no committee reports to share, we can proceed to the mayor's report. Mayor Jack's here.
Thank you, just got a few things to report this evening. Last Tuesday, October 4th, we held a citizen Narcan training workshop right here at Borough Hall as part of Public Safety Month. I wanted to thank the MOCO overdose response team members, who took the time to give us these lifesaving skills in the face of substance abuse. If you weren't able to attend but want, wanted to, and you want some brief reading material on how to use Narcan, or if you'd like other literature, or like to attend another class in the future, please reach out. I am always happy to take recommendations and give information out as I can. For any residents still wishing to participate in the Bridgeport Founders' Day Steering Committee, we will be meeting next Tuesday at 7:00 PM here in this room at Borough Hall for our next meeting, and we're going to continue meeting on the third Tuesday of the month until the event occurs in early 2023. And to continue Public Safety Month, please join us for a few more events throughout October. Due to the popularity of our spring class, we're going to be holding another CPR certification class in this room on Wednesday, October 19th at 6:00 PM. If you wish to sign up, please sign up with the link on my Facebook page, or reach out to me via email to receive the link directly, since this class does only have a few spots left. And there also are a few flyers at the front of the room and the, at the table, for those who are here, that will be able to direct you to the link as well. And the evening following that, Thursday, October 20th at 7:00 PM, we will be hosting a gun safety educational panel, that everyone is welcome to attend. Ms. Pat Burris will be joining from King Shooter Supply to give a quick gun safety 101 demonstration. Officer Sell with the Bridgeport Police Department will be giving a brief gun safety talk on proper gun ownership and storage, to keep your weapons in line with the law. And finally, our partner Race for Peace will be bringing in members from their group to have a panel on their experiences with gun violence, how it can affect small communities like ours, and what we can do to prevent these situations as best as we can. So, I hope to see you there, and we also have flyers up front as well for that. For the last and most family-friendly event, on Monday, October 24th at 6:30 PM, please join the Bridgeport Fire Company, at Bridgeport Fire Company Number One, right across the street from Borough Hall, for an open house. You can meet the fire, the volunteer firefighters, touch a truck, and take a tour of the firehouse. So, it'll be an exciting evening as well. And finally, this month's office hours with the mayor will be taking place on Sunday, October 23rd, in my office on the first floor of Borough Hall, from 10:00 to 11:30 AM. And that's all I have this evening, thank you.
All right, thank, excuse me, thank you, Mayor Jack's here. Moving on to the chief's report, Chief Beretta.
Good evening, everyone. Just some of the training we've gone through, so, along with the fire department, the Bridgeport Police Department, continuing on with water rescue training, that's going to continue on with the fire company to get to the boats, that's going to be coming up in the next, probably 30 to 60 days. There are going to be some, some training, it's going to be across the street, and then actual the boat training, so we'll have 15 to 20 people between the fire department and the police department trained. Other trainings that have gone on recently, we have a lot of veterans, veterans outreach, and there is a veterans Montgomery County, with the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, there's a veterans response team. I have two, or one veteran officer, Officer Flora, and another officer, Officer Stead, that are going to be participating with the, this SISAM and Veterans Response Team, deals with homelessness, some of the, some of the folks, and then trying to get some of the people that are veterans, and getting them specific help, and getting them right to treatment. So, that's the training that's going on right now. We've had, and finished up, we had this MDT, which is a child abuse center training, we had two people that went to that, that was about a week ago, and some additional trainings. I pay attention to what people say on social media probably too much, but watching concerns on special intersections. So, in response to that, I was out there, and so were a couple of the guys over the last three days, Sixth Street, Seventh Street, Mill Street, and some Ford Street, so we were doing a specific enforcement in those areas, also, also depots streets, so. So, if you just get on social media, or you call us, either way, if I see it, we'll respond to it. We're going to do like three to four streets a week, we'll spread it around, and additionally, we'll have, each of our shifts will be making a report on that, so that we can kind of keep in touch with, with the needs. We're not always going to be able to please everybody with this, there's a lot of general discourtesy in the world, and it, it filters all the way down to how people drive, so, you know, we'll be meeting some more people if they drive discourteously, so that's going on. That's, we'll be also working with our PSP friends for truck enforcement, we'll be doing that in the next few weeks, as well as our radar details with the Pennsylvania State Police on some of our high-volume roadways, so if you see a whole bunch of cars pulled over, you'll know why. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief Beretta. Moving forward to new business, are there any items of new business that members of council wish to discuss tonight?
I had an item, that's okay. I was chatting with a couple of residents that lived on Union and Grove, and it seemed that multiple residents in that area had a lot of issues with noise, particularly in that intersection, so I guess when cars are going up that road, they tend to rev their engines, some normally, but it tends to be like a more fun and exciting kind of thing for people that have sports cars and motorcycles, and from my understanding, it echoes and bounces off those houses really loudly, wakes them up out of their sleep, scares their dogs, it's like, and I, it was pretty jarring, like, kind of standing on that side of the road, I had never really, like, experienced it, and spent some time there just to kind of see if it was, you know, like, how extreme it was, and I found it to be pretty jarring as well. I know there's not, like, any way to stop sound necessarily, but some of the residents had suggested putting up some signage that they had seen in other towns, that might suggest, like, you know, this is a noise violation of some sorts. I'm not sure, like, exactly what we can or can't do, but I was wondering, Chief Beretta, if you had a comment on that, or if there was any, like, police, kind of, you know, station maybe throughout the day there, maybe at night, that's kind of when they said it was the most bothersome for them, so just wanted to kind of echo that, make sure that I'm sharing it with everyone, is it a concern that I've heard, and see if you have any comment, or maybe some suggestions. Thank you.
Some things are actually precluded from the, from the vehicle code, because cars make noise, and they do, and they're going to labor up a hill, and at night, sound travels to a greater, to a greater extent. What we can do, if there's equipment violations for vehicles that are not properly or overly equipped, and see how people that'll have specialized mufflers or baffles, and my intention to do that is with some additional training with our state police friends for inspection units that come in here and do selective enforcement, so it's not going to be Union and specifically that, but what it'll do is, I'd like to get them out a few different times, train up with our people, and then remove some instances on our community, there might be people that are, that are driving a certain car all the time, that are out of inspection regulations, and, and stopping and conducting enforcement that way, so that we see the difference on, on some of these different streets, if that makes sense. I know that as far as non-vehicle-related sound, there's a difference between, I guess, 70 and 80 decibels after, I guess it's like 7:00 or 8:00 PM, if it's non-car-related. If it's, if it's the natural sounds of the car, it's one thing, if it's the windows down and the music, because that sound carries, that's something that we can enforce, too. Under Borough Code, if, if, if the music or the noise from the inside of the car can be heard more than 25 feet, that's a violation, plus anything else, so that's another way that we can approach it from an oblique angle.
Great, thank you.
If that area is particularly loud, and I know there's some areas of the borough that are loud in some intersections, I mean, is it something we could look at in the future? If there is some sort of signage, just, you know, just like we have signs that say, like, don't roll to a stop, like, roll through, go look and find, I don't know if that would be worth it, especially if it's at night, I don't know if people will see it, but it may make people feel good knowing that, like, we're trying, is that something we can look into?
Is that something we can look into in terms of what would be appropriate in the future? Do we have to do it right now, but something that we can consider?
We can look into the signage. I haven't, I haven't seen that before, but I'm open to look at, look into it and then see if, if there's something that, that would be, that would be appropriate. The best thing is do whatever is, is appropriate that we can actually enforce. So when you see those, you know, I love those signs that say, you know, "Stop, a full stop is free, partial stops are like $150," because we can enforce that. So if there is some way that we can do it and find some creative ways to do it, I'll look into see, you know, what, what options we would have for that.
Yeah, and I think sometimes having a sign, especially if it's not very expensive for us, but sometimes for people doing it, it's like, oh, that must mean that they're paying attention, and they notice that. So not only for the residents who are there, but people driving through, like, it shows that the borough and the police are aware of that issue, and maybe people will address their behavior appropriately.
All right, thank you all. Any other items of new business tonight? Okay, seeing none, we can proceed to open forum and announcements. Are there any announcements for this evening?
I just have a quick announcement. It is a happy one. I'm getting married this weekend, so I'm going to be changing my name. But I, for this purpose, I just wanted to warn you guys, we're probably going to start, have to start working on our enunciation because Councilperson Heil and Councilperson Hi will be sitting next to each other, so my apologies in advance for that. Thank you.
Congrats, Councilwoman.
Congratulations, Councilwoman Funahashi, for now. I don't know if we have it in the budget for.
No, Funahashi, Funahashi for life.
For a second name placard. All right, seeing no further announcements for this evening, we can proceed to public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to step forward?
Good evening, council. John Gundrum, representing growing Bridgeport together. Just like to make a general public announcement that we are having our board and market meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM right here. And we'll be discussing the market. We're actually looking at making a name change for it because of the time changes that's happening to it. We're going to move it to a Sunday morning, so twilight on the river just kind of, doesn't work very well for very morning. There's no twilight. So that's one of the things, and then we're going to discuss some of the holiday shopping village activities and also award a bid to the tent vendor for that, so.
Do you have a, a name in, in mind for the?
We do. So if I go through, we'll, we'll have a new name after tomorrow, and then we can start discussing all the marketing material and everything relative to that, new logos and everything. So, anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment this evening?
Listening to adjourned.
Seeing none.
Second.
All right, it's 8:50. Thank you, everybody, for attending this evening's meeting. We're adjourned.